For the definition of family is, the state has a number of definitions out there that we'll talk about, not just only family, but certain thresholds that get, if they get exceeded, certain things would happen. Like, for example, if you have more than five people, non-related people, beyond second of kin, I believe, sprinklers will have to be installed. And there's definitions similar to that for the health code. So if you have a septic system, if you have X number of people, non-related in a facility, then that's going to trigger a certain type of septic system. So what we did with the definition of family was, we took the most strict, which was four unrelated.
Four or more?
Four or more, thank you, unrelated people. It was just an attempt to take the most strict standard and apply it to try to corral all of these different thresholds that the state has in their different regulations.
Does anyone have any questions for?
I have a silly question. I don't understand the concept of why, so if they're recommending if you're unrelated, right, then you have to put in sprinklers, or you have to get a different septic system. But if they're all related, I mean, aren't those things, shouldn't it be based on the number of people, not whether or not you have a relation to them?
Some of the statute has it as a number of people, but some of the Mass statute has it as under family. And I think that's what Paul was trying to do, was kind of get everything all together into one definition to make it simpler. But, yeah, the Mass state code is not consistent when it comes to that. So that's where the, and it's not a silly question, it's a good question.
And then you said this is the most stringent, so what's the other spectrum?
Well, you'll see somewhere at six or more. So we just thought be a little more conservative, go with the four.
And would there be any immediate impact to folks in Norton because of this?
Well, I think going forward, it's not as though we're seeing, well, we do have certain uses, like group homes that we do have here. You know, you wouldn't retroactively go back if you have an approved project and it's, and they meet, they met their requirements, I don't think we would have a reason to reexamine it. But when new projects come forward, they still have to meet the state requirements. So, you know, if they're, you know, five or more unrelated people, you know, I would assume the fire department would say, okay, sprinkler system, don't worry, it's either five or six. But you still, they still have to meet the requirements of the state statutes.
It's my understanding that they weren't going to be looking backwards, this is for everything going forward.
Right.
That was my understanding as to, you know, my vote on it.
That was our intent. It was just, we, again, we see on a regular basis uses that come to us, whether it's just us meeting here, or something that might go to the zoning board, or the planning board. We just want to, you know, we're just trying to provide more clarity, not only to the different boards, but to the public, so that we can look at something and have an agreement as, this is what this means. And when you have that many gaps, it, you know, you get a lot of back and forth with it, because we just don't have as much clarity as we would like.
And then, if I may ask, I noticed assisted living residence is different than nursing home? A nursing home's very short. What's the?
Sure. Well, assisted living is a less intensive needs for the residents there. If you're in a nursing home, then you need round-the-clock attention. Assisted living means you could still, you could still cook, you know, you don't have the medical care that you would have in a nursing home. So again, those definitions come right out of state statute, but there, that is the difference between a nursing home and assisted living.
And they don't go into, I mean, I find it odd that, like, on the assisted living, it goes into the third criteria, which is flex payments or third-party reimbursements from or behalf of the residents. I mean, a nursing home does the same thing.
Yes, this, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
A lot of these come from different statutes within the state code, so that's going to be the result of their process for adopting those particular statutes. So again, we didn't, you know, we just literally copied and pasted from it.
Is that the best approach, or should we modify them so that they're up-to-date and accurate?
We went through it extensively. I don't know if, I'm sure you've all watched our long meeting.
Which one?
I'm sure you all watched it. But it's my understanding that, I know we went back and forth on that one, but I think the definitions were, I think they were accurate. The assisted living one, in particular, is, there's a lot of, I want to put this right. Well, assisted living places that are, you don't have to be a nurse to work there and to help, what's it called, a PCA, I think it's called? So that would cover that. The nursing home would cover the actual nursing, and more of a full-time, 24-hour care.
I was under the impression, because they distribute medications in assisted living, that you have to have a nurse on staff. And then how do you deal with a facility that has both? That they offer, you know, an assisted living environment as well as a skilled nursing?
Well, I guess that gets to the question about the definitions, is that the state still gets involved in the licensing of these. So it wouldn't be all on the town. So I think keeping the definitions they have is appropriate, because they're still the ones that are going to be licensing a nursing home or assisted living facility.
And it would still need to come in for a special permit, is that how we listen through?
Special permit in certain categories.
Yeah, so they would still have to come before the board first, special permit, so all of that would be asked.
Okay, do we have any further questions for either Paul or Steve?
Just a second, I just want to flip the page.
There's a lot, I think it was a great initiative by Paul to put this together, because it helps eliminate a lot of confusion for folks coming in and trying to figure out where they have to go, what they have to do to get their project done. And it saves a lot of time for the folks working here.
And the board was very, very wise in looking at the use tables to determine where would be the appropriate places to allow all of these different uses. Now, there are some uses there that the state tells us, essentially, that we can't add any zoning regulations on them. They fall under something called the Dover Amendment. And they're religious facilities, educational facilities, statute's very clear that they have to meet building code requirements, but we can't, we can't add things like special permits. And in some cases, it's very explicit in the statute where it says you can't add it for religious facilities and educational facilities. But on those others that were not, you know, the board was, paid very close attention and made some amendments to what we initially had, to, you know, really looking out for the community as a whole, to, you know, cite these in what we think are appropriate locations.
And these updated definitions can be applied to things already operating in town, correct?
Well, they absolutely can. So if, again, if they were seeking new building permits, you know, potentially, we would have a chance to look at it again.
Okay. I would say if there's an unlicensed, I was just going to pick one, mobile home somewhere, would you be able to go back and say you now need to pull a special permit? Maybe that's a bad example, or a boarding home.
That's probably one for town council.
Again, it's my understanding that it was going to be from the vote moving forward, if this is.
Because again, it has nothing to do with business licenses, it's just simply zoning. And Paul, just on behalf of the board, we're very, you know, sorry to hear about the passing of your model.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, anything further for Paul or Steve? Thank you very much, I appreciate you guys coming in.
We're not done with them, are we?
No, there's probably one more that we need to discuss with. But you don't have to stand at the podium, if you guys want to go sit down.
Just didn't want you to leave.
Chair intends to motion to recommend Article 15 as written in the warrant. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Actually, that's the only one we have left.
One more, 18.
Yep. So Article 18, the petition of David Cohen to amend Chapter 175, Article 14, Water Resource Protection District, Section 14.5. Ms. Cohen, you want to come up?
Please.
Just please introduce yourself at the podium.
Sure. David Cohen, 704 Drive, how are you?
Good, thank you.
I got some handouts, can I give to the folks?
Sure. Mr. Chair, while he's doing that, is this, do we have any decision? Is this voted on by the planning board?
Yeah, Mr. Hornsby, he can probably give that recommendation from the planning board.
Yeah, let's get through the presentation, then we'll have Stephen Paul come back up.
Okay, sure. Maybe just take one, if any extras. I got, I've actually got three.
This speaks specifically to the article, or does this, seems like it's?
Specifically to the article.
And only the article?
And only the article. Yep.
Roots of your neighbor.
There we go. One for you.
Thank you.
One for you. I'm actually going to take that back and pop that out.
Sounds good.
And one for you.
What do you want, do you want to sing?
Okay, so the reason, folks, for this petition is, the town of Norton, they recognize watershed districts, into three watershed districts. And let me preface by saying, the watershed districts are governed by the Massachusetts DEP. So Zone 1 and 2, think of Zone 1 and 2 as the most stringent by the DEP. And just a quick example of a Zone 1 and 2 is, Zone 1 would be directly adjacent to a town body of water, Zone 2 would be adjacent to a underground wellhead. In addition to that, the town, in any town for this matter, has the ability to create what they call a Zone 3 watershed. And the Zone 3 watershed is not maintained or governed by the DEP, they leave it up to the townspeople. And essentially, what Zone 3 is, is technically groundwater in that Zone 3 area could eventually spill into a Zone 2 or a Zone 1 waterhead, watershed. But when Norton made this map, this map was made back in 1996. And in 1996, the underground, and this is specific for gasoline stations and underground storage tanks. So the map was created in 1996 by Dufresne and Henry, and has since, it hasn't been modified in 20-something years. So at the time, the map was generated based off the technology for underground storage fuel tanks, which was steel tanks, very little monitoring devices if there's ever a leak. And you fast-forward 20, 22 years, the underground tanks that are being installed by gasoline companies are double-walled, so they're double-line tanks, they're, all of the piping from the tanks to the pumps are double-walled. There's many levels of monitoring by the store itself, there's a third-party monitoring company, similar to, if you have a home alarm system, somebody trips your alarm, it goes to ADT, ADT calls the local police. So the way the tanks are designed today, if the first wall of the tank finds a leak, or springs a leak, it will in turn, no, it will trigger an alarm, and the alarm will notify whoever's on that list. It's the DEP, it's the fire department, it's... So I don't want to get into the whole technology of the tanks themselves. That was done by Cumberland Farms and their professionals over a couple planning board meetings. My intent is to modify the bylaw to allow the ability to install underground storage tanks, underground fuel tanks, in a Zone 3 watershed. So what I had done in the meantime is, I had met, I had met with the water department. So the water department, water and sewer department, they govern, and they dictate the limits of the, of this Zone 3 watershed. So I had a meeting with them a couple weeks back with Frank Fornier and his commission. At the time, there was a presentation about the construction of the tanks, the alarm mechanisms, and all of the controls that need to be in place before these tanks can be buried underground. So the Zone 3 in the town of Norton, let me back up. Norton today is the only town in between Mansfield, Easton, Brockton, Plainville, Seacon, all the surrounding towns that do not allow, I'm sorry, that do allow underground storage tanks in a Zone 3, as long as it's monitored by their water department, or granted by their water department and their fire department. So I had a presentation to the water department with all of the controls and components and design of the tanks that will be installed underground here at that site, as well as with the fire department. Fire department has a whole list of inspections, checklists, et cetera, before these tanks can go underground. The big issue is, the concern is, the proximity to the, our underground wellheads and the proximity of our Zone 3 designation. So I just, I want to call you to the map I had given you here. So in this map here, I think it's easier to explain if I kind of do a two-fold. In the town of Norton, you see this circle here, this red circle. And that's in the, let's say, the southeast part of the town, down by 140, around the Tontline. And those are the two wellheads that we pull most of our water from. And that red circle designates a 400-foot radius, where DEP does not allow underground storage tanks for any reason within that 400-foot radius. So my site is just outside, this lavender line is our Zone 3 delineation line. So anything in here is Zone 3, anything out here is, there's no restrictions. So right about here is mass gas, okay? I'm sorry, not mass gas, Speedway. I am on the fringe of the Zone 3. Mass gas is actually approved in a Zone 3, up on 140. Mass gas sits in the Zone 3 watershed, they've been, I think they've been there since 2004, they may have been a prior business prior to the 2004. Per the fire department records, they haven't had any leaks, there's monitoring wells around the site, there are double-wall tanks, the notifying mechanisms are there, the alarms are there. So they're doing essentially what the town wants them to do. What I want to bring up to you is, what the water department had suggested is, they want to endorse, or they have endorsed, the bylaw change. And this is, we're not approving the Cumberland Farms project, we're just approving the opportunity to, on a case-by-case, site-by-site basis, within a Zone 3 watershed, to, in conjunction with the planning board, to go ahead and deliberate between the two boards, the planning board and the water department, to see if the location of the proposed site in Zone 3 travels down to 123, pretty much, it ends pretty much here, or the police department in works, I guess that's west, towards the Wheaton property, on the other side of 123. So my site is the old Bank of America site, and the rest of the Zone 3 site is across the street, so I don't know if that's the north, I think it's the south side. So the other condition is, in the way our bylaw is written, is this red area here on 140 denotes commercial zoning. And the way our commercial zoning is written today is, a gas station with underground storage tanks is allowed. There's no special permit, you go into site plan approval, and as long as you conform to...
Is it?
Yep. So that is, yeah, so that...
It just turned green, I just wanted to make sure that it was the same.
Yep. So that area there is, allows underground storage tanks. Our wellheads right here are just, I'm sorry, our wellheads are just about right here. So if you take the distance, if they were to put a gas station here to the wellheads, versus, that's my site to the wellheads, a significant, these guys are much closer than the site up here. So the big issue is the construction of the tanks. When the law was written, they were steel, single-wall tanks, versus today's technology, which has double redundancy over everything. Because I'm sure you're all aware with other spills in town, it's very costly for insurance companies, the business that owns the tanks. If they have a leak, it could cost them hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars to go, because the DEP will just make them chase dirty dirt until they're satisfied. So the tank construction is to that where the reliability is 90, you know, it's 5-9's reliability. If you're going to get a leak, it's going to get, you're going to get the leak in the installation process. But that's all inspected by DEP. So we dig a hole, ready to put the tanks in, DEP looks at the bottom of the hole, fire department looks at the bottom of the hole, border health looks at the bottom of the hole. You put the tanks in, same thing, your backfill, same thing. So let's say there's a, I don't know the exact process, I'm not the expert, but let's say there's a five-to-10 step process to put these tanks and alarms into the ground. It is all governed, maintained, monitored, between the EEP, DEP, border health, town fire department. So the concerns are, or the, so just a couple other notes. I had presented, I got endorsement from finance department. I did give you some economics on the deal, which really is more site-specific than bylaw-specific, so I'm going to skip over those.
Stick to the bylaw, please.
Yeah. So I'm just trying to advocate on, all we're doing is modifying the bylaw to say, hey, in a Zone 3 watershed, if it is, if it is approved by the water department and the planning board in conjunction, that they feel the risk is minimum with the one, the company, the strength of the company that's putting the system in, as opposed, you know, Cumberland Farms from David Cohen's gas. So Cumberland Farms is going to have a lot more insurance, and a lot more controls, and, you know, they're a multi-billion dollar company as opposed to a one-off. Not meaning you can't have a one-off company come in and put a gas station in the town of Norton, it's just, they want to approve it or deny it on a case-by-case basis. So the way we are, our bylaw exists today, if you live, you can basically go from 123 at five quarters in Easton, to the Norton-Atterboro line on 123, and there's one gas station. The gas station that's there is Speedway. Speedway, thank you, Peter. Which is just outside, and it was appointed to the water department, which is just outside the limit of the Zone 3 prohibition, we can call it. So my feeling is, with the endorsement from the fire department, the water department especially, because they're the governing boards that are going to deal with this, identify the leaks, and they still have to get project-specific. So we can say, you know what, as a town, we're going to allow gas stations in a Zone 3, where, again, we are the only town in the area that does not allow, that prohibits gas stations in Zone 3s. DEP does not see, they do not govern, they do not monitor Zone 3s, it's town-specific. We wrote this, the limits of our Zone 3 back in 1996, when Dufresne-Henry made the delineations. So what I'm pushing is, technology has changed in 22 years. I don't think we've heard underground tanks, latest technology, and we're hearing with companies out of contaminating groundwater. Please don't get this confused with the town water, the issues we're having with town water. Town water isn't contaminated with gasoline, it's not contaminated with oil, town water is based off of the infrastructure that, the old infrastructure, and issues like that.
And I don't want to have, the town water isn't contaminated, it has?
I don't mean contaminated.
Good distinction.
Whatever, it's...
It has higher levels of manganese and iron, too.
Okay. So the point of the petition is to bring it current to 2019 standards, but it still gives, it still gives the town the authority to approve or deny, per site, a project.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Cohen?
Just want to acknowledge your patience in coming back tonight. I know your last meeting, thank you for accommodating.
Sure.
We can have a board review of the discussion.
Yep.
I have one question on the article itself.
Yeah.
So you're, the section 3, where the underlying text is gasoline stations including underground storage of liquid petroleum located within Zone 3, provided it's special permit, right? Under 1, I just don't understand, I might not be reading this appropriately, but the inserted text says located outside of Zone 3. Oh, because it's prohibited uses?
Prohibited uses. If you read, I had given you the letter from the water and sewer department, did I give that as a handout?
As if it's suggested statement?
Yeah, he just suggested...
Because I would think this would be, like, wouldn't it include locate outside of Zone 1, 2, and 3?
You are 100% correct.
Oh my God, that's twice tonight.
So if you read, there you go, if you read that... If you read that, he would rather-
Within Zone 1 or 2, okay.
Yeah. So he found that. When I wrote it, I wrote Zone 1, 2, and 3. I should've said outside of 1 in Zone 2. So the water department corrected that.
Can I ask the representatives of the planning board, come back up? Paul, you might as well come back up, too. I can't see who's behind that. Who's that?
Orin.
So just, what was the planning board's position?
We denied it 2, 4, and 5 against. So I was, initially I was 4, and my thought process was that, I believe currently above-ground tanks were allowed in Zone 3. I've since been corrected that above-ground tanks are allowed, but gas stations are not allowed in Zone 3. The reasons, and we just, we just had the meeting, I rushed over here, so I didn't bring my notes, but I asked for reasons for, for folks' denials on it. A great deal of concern had to do with the water, obviously. It's the biggest concern in town. And the way the Zone 3 is, it's not a zone like a, like a residential or commercial, it's more of a topographical. So that zone is created because that's where the water flows. So that was a concern as well, and with potentially two new wells being drilled, some of the board felt uncomfortable with approving something like that, not knowing where the new Zone 3 would be.
Is there potential for this location, or, well, is there potential that some areas that were Zone 3 could then fall into Zone 1 or 2 with the placement of the new wells?
Depending on where the new wells are, and I don't wanna speak for the water commissioner, but depending on where they are, you know, I don't wanna speak to a particular site either, but I don't think, there would be changes, but I don't think it would be drastic. From, from what I've seen, it wouldn't be a major change in the Zone 3.
But still, change is likely, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Potentially.
Yeah, potentially.
And to make this even a little more complicated, too, is that-
I think-
Zone 3, I don't try to do this, this is the way our bylaw is written, but our zoning map actually has the overlay for the Water Resource Protection District. So if you change, if DEP redraws the boundaries after the wells were moved, wherever they may be, you, we still have to amend the zoning map to then reflect the new overlay district.
But, so from, Chair, from my understanding, I think we're getting, and I heard this at the FinCom, too, there's a lot of conflation between the project and the zoning change. So the examples you're moving, or you're citing, with if the new well goes in, that may change. That's, for me, that's irrelevant to the intent of the article, right?
Correct, yes.
It's going as petitioning to change Zone 3, not to change the bylaw and get the project put in at the same time. So that seems to be a point of confusion, so I don't know if that factored into your decision, but if you're, I'm curious your thoughts on that.
So to, and I'm speaking for, I don't wanna speak for a particular member of the board, but the concern that I, that was relayed to me on the changing of Zone 3 would be, because it's topographical and not area-wise, it could potentially have a drastic change in that. So that, that was the concern that was relayed to me. I haven't been told that it would be a major change, but that was a concern for one of the no voters.
Because, but the, but the, this wouldn't be by right, this would be, it's-
By special permit.
By special permit and voted on by two different boards in the town. So it doesn't open up carte blanche, that this, the bylaw change in and of itself does not, I don't have a huge issue with this, knowing that there's that protection. Having, I work on projects like this, what Mr. Cohen's describing with the, with the new technology, with these USTs and the protections around, it's not the old tank that got a hole and drip for 50 years, not without anyone knowing. And again, with, just me personally, with the protection of having both, any project that came before the town be voted on by two boards, I think there's still plenty of protection around it that I don't, I think I'm okay with this article change.
Seems like it modernizes our approach and brings it in line with surrounding towns.
Correct, yeah, I agree. Ms. Eli?
Do you have questions? After you. I have, like, six that I worked on when they were talking, is that okay? Well, yeah.
Yeah, let's break 'em up a little bit, though, so we can get, yeah.
We'll go back and forth.
Okay.
So, yeah, Ms. Dolly?
So can you guys just explain, so the watershed district, the Zone 3 watershed district, can it potentially drain into a 2? Like, what's the difference?
That's specifically why it's a Zone 3, actually, is that Zone 3 is, as it's defined by the state, is it flows, it has the potential to flow into Zone 2.
I thought the state didn't define it Zone 3.
They do.
I thought we did. Oh, they defined it, but they don't recognize it?
They don't regulate it. They define it, but they, they allow the municipalities to decide how they want to regulate it.
Okay.
But it is defined as water essentially could flow into Zone 2.
Ms. Steele?
Mr. Cohen, at a town meeting, will the water department be speaking on your behalf? Will you have, like, any, I know that you've done a lot of work on this, and I know the planning board has, I know there have been a lot of discussions, and now, you know, tonight, we're looking at what I would consider to, it's gotta be somewhat complicated, because this has been going on forever, and we're supposed to, you know, recommend it or not recommend it in, you know, an hour's time. At town meeting, will there be experts on your side?
Yeah, so I have, I have a environmental groundwater professional, and I have the tank professional there, they're gonna be at town meeting, the same two professionals that presented at the planning board meeting. Yeah.
And then will the planning board also be speaking as far as, you know, your take on the issue as well?
It would be as an individual, if anyone from the board spoke on it, yeah. I hate to interrupt, I don't want to hijack your meeting, but if, I was an initial yes vote on this, but we do have another member, Orin, who was a no vote, he might be able to give you a little more background, if he wants to.
Yeah, that's why I said, any planning, I couldn't see, I couldn't see behind the chair, but I saw there was another planning board representative there, so.
Can I finish my-
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so, so back to you guys. So I actually have a problem with this, there's a really good reason why I'm not on the planning board, because this is all, you guys all seem to have a little bit of a handle on what's going on. So from my point of view, if you're gonna have experts at town meeting, and the planning board's gonna have representatives there, and we're asking town meeting to vote, from my point of view, I would be a yes in moving this question forward.
Correct.
But I'm not comfortable voting for or against it, because I really don't think that tonight has given me enough time to understand the project, and that's just my point of view in moving forward.
Ms. Segal, do you wanna come to the podium?
I guess if you're asking me why I voted against it, a couple of reasons. First, if you look at what they're proposing, it calls for a minimizing contamination, doesn't say eliminating contamination. The DEP requires inspections of these tanks, even the newer tanks, every three years. They don't do that because it's not bringing, gonna break. They do it to protect everybody. But that's nice that they have it, but that says to me, it's capable of not functioning, for one. Two, Mass DEP 2018 provided a summary of information of underground storage tanks covering that period from November, October 2017 to September 2018. The percentage of UST systems in significant operation compliance with released detention and release prevention requirements were 48%. They also had the number of confirmed releases, half of which were causes unknown. We had someone from, that was one of the residents, stood up and said, Norton has a water problem. Why would we even wanna take any kind of risk? I mean, we have, we have, there's a lot of wetlands, there's a lot of Zone 2, why would we take any risk to put something in, in an area that's that sensitive? One of the other things that I would note is, we went through, the town spent over $50,000 for a village center plan. The planning board in this June meeting endorsed that plan. That plan, and we said we wanted to stand behind it. That plan attached some proposed zoning requirements of the six prohibitions, gas stations was one of them. Why as a town are we taking an effort to override what we just supported to pay for? Let's put it another way. The Zone 3 has a lot of prohibitions, and has very few permitted uses. Why aren't we looking at that Zone 3? And I agree, there's elements of it that's soft, there's elements that we can do, but why would we pick the most onerous use to allow, when there's other uses that we should be reviewing and say, we should let some other uses go in there? But we're not doing that. Why? And I'll almost end it with, the question we have, I have, what was before us was not Cumberland Farms. Remember that. It was anybody, it was ABC gas station. They could put that in several different places. And although, if you look at the water and sewer commission, they want it on a case-by-case basis. They wanna look at the financial, they're financially stable, they have a great track record. As a planning board, there's nothing on our bylaws allowing us to look at the financial capability of an applicant. Nothing. And if we're gonna start doing that, we're gonna have to look at ABC Plumbing, ABC gas station, and we have a real problem with trying to say, no, you can't go in there. And I just, myself, have a personal problem with, with looking, let me put it another way. They're before us, they were before us with a special permit. If that special permit were turned down, I'm not saying it is, I'm not speaking for the board, but there were issues, they were still haven't resolved, traffic issues, they're still-
This isn't specific to a project, this is an overall bylaw, so I don't wanna get into-
But I'm asking you, if that, if that project didn't go forward, would you be here approving this bylaw? If that was denied, would you be even considering this bylaw?
I don't know, the bylaw's in, it's in front of us, and so that's what we-
But the reason I'm asking is because it's not related to that one individual. A, and the limitations on our case-by-case looking at something are limited. We can't look at the financial viability of it, we can't look at the history in the town. Those are nice things, and I agree with them, but why aren't we looking at that zone and looking at what we can do with it as a town, and then, then let them come in? There are other places, there are other places in town that that can go. I'm not talking specifically, but why are we as a town looking, we found a use that's, that we like, and we're gonna say, we're gonna move around our bylaw to accommodate them?
And, Segal, this, the bylaw as it's, as it's in the warrant is specific to no project, so I don't wanna get project-specific, again.
That's fair enough.
Again, the town's gonna make a decision on, of the use of Zone 3 with this bylaw.
Okay, but, but, but no, but that's not what's before you. They're asking you to do it on a case-by-case basis, and they gave you the presentation to the water and sewer department. That's not what, that's not what's in that bylaw. That bylaw says anybody can go anywhere in Zone 3 and put, that's allowed, and put a, a gas station with a special permit. And I'm just saying, that limitation will tie our hands in terms of what we can do, what we can't do, if it's allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, can I rebut that, just while it's in my head, about a couple of things?
No, I don't wanna get into, do any of the members of the board have any questions, Mr. Segal? Phil, Mr. Kimball?
Oh, I don't, I don't have, I just have questions, I think, of the board.
Okay.
I have a few. You had mentioned 48% of the inspected tanks were significantly operationally compliant?
They, they reported that only, they had 48%.
Okay, so that, but the phrasing was significantly operationally compliant, was that what it was?
It was, to tell, it was significant operational compliance with released detention and release prevention requirements.
So that other 52%, is it implied that those are not operationally compliant? Or are there other metrics where, because I hear significantly, and I think, is there operational compliance? Like, I think, there's not clear, and I think there's an inference being made with that data gap, that-
I provided, you know, I can provide you a copy of what, what's on their website.
Okay.
That's where I took it from.
Okay.
The other thing was, okay, another question.
And you cited, you mentioned tanks being found failing, but you didn't cite a number on that.
No, there were 56, 31 of which were unknown causes.
Out of how many tanks?
Oh, maybe 3,000.
There was 3,000 tanks in the state?
State.
State of Mass?
Yes.
All right, that seems low, okay.
Yeah, it seems a little low.
Seems a little low to what happens in our town. Right, I mean, that's-
No, no, but you're saying that the overall number of tanks in the state of Massachusetts seems low, that there's only 3,000 underground storage tanks in the state of Massachusetts?
It's a significant point, it really is, to-
Okay.
Are those current technology tanks? Are those double-wall tanks, Mr. Segal? Or are those single-wall tanks?
That's, that's reported by DEP, that's the latest report I have, in 2018.
Are those double-wall tanks?
I don't know.
That, okay, I just wanna make sure there's no misinformation. You mentioned another thing about financials of the company that is proposing to put the tanks in. There's no mention of financial viability of any of that.
No, actually, I'm quoting your words.
No.
You said the strength of the company.
You guys, I don't wanna get into a debate here, this isn't the form part, we're gonna discuss this at town meeting, so I just was interested in the opinion. Thank you very much, Mr. Segal.
Need to make sure he's making correct facts and-
Ms. Kimball?
Making them up in his head.
Please, Ms. Cohen, be respectful of everyone in the room.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are we, I still had questions.
We, we just, I got someone else who has a question, too, so we gotta-
Oh, oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't know-
Evening.
Hi.
I had to ask that to come before you, by the way, just so, you know, I just came from dinner, so.
Well, that makes me feel-
Don't get excited about the fact I have a tie on. So, 1906.
Identify yourself.
Wap Campbell, 51 Pine Street, thank you. Mr. Chairman, 1906, the parallel laws around town, we adopted the bylaw, I was involved in it. And the reason I adopted the above-ground bylaw was because we were told back then that if any gas station came into a Zone 3 at that time, it could be allowed. So we had to decide if we were gonna put them above-ground or below-ground. Whereas a town decided to go above-ground, because we wanted to be able to see if there's a problem. And that's the main reason why we did it. It's 1996. Now the weapon comes along, now we're talking about 2019. 2019, I don't know about the rest of you, but I don't want a gas tank sitting exposed on top of the ground. It's a ridiculous concept. The technology's there today, and I'm not even talking about this project, I'm talking about in general. We shouldn't be looking at this like it's, it's a skunk in a hen house. It really isn't. This is a, an issue that we have to address. The DEP does not recognize a lot of the restrictions on Zone 3. Whereas a town have adopted additional bylaws, which is something we are very famous for, by the way. We adopt a lot of bylaws and procedures that a lot of towns don't have. In this particular case, we have to look at the project itself, not, not this project, but any project in Zone 3, as to whether or not we wanna allow above-ground tanks to be exposed. And again, we have to be concerned about that. If nothing else, just from the vapor or the petroleum product itself. Now, I never asked somebody when they put in a new oil tank in their home, if that 275-gallon tank leaks, where's it gonna go? How many 275-gallon oil tanks will have in Zone 3? I bet you'd find there's quite a few. The process has been modified and changed over the years. We have restrictions in place. The planning board has the final say on a special permit, that's why it's designed that way. The fire department, if you talk to them, you're gonna find out that they have a lot of regulations, rules and regulations that they have to follow, including a lot of monitoring systems that have to be put in place. So I'm very confident that our fire department will do a good job before they permit any kind of project like this. You've got the water department saying it's okay. And by the way, the wells, you know anything about the Canoe River aquifer? You know that any well that we drill is gonna be next to the one we've already built. They're not gonna let us put a new well anywhere else. It's gonna be in, within the same confines of what you're, what you've already got. It may be toward the edge of it, it may be 300 feet this way or 400 feet that way, it's not gonna be half a mile or a mile away. That's not gonna happen. We tried to drill a well down on Nine Street many years ago, we're not, we're turned down because eastern wells are beyond us, and they wouldn't let us do it. So, and the village concept was brought up- So, and the village concept was brought up, the village commercial concept was brought up, we made a lot of recommendations in that committee. None of which have been enacted yet, and that shouldn't even be a part of this process we're talking about today. And my final comment is, in 2002, when mass gas was there, and we had ethylene and other byproducts, gasoline byproducts saturating the ground at the end of Reservoir Street with a bunch of brand-new homes that had Artesian wells, the town had to step forward at our own cost, put in a brand-new water line to connect those. Now, no one ever determined where that gas came from. It could have come from mass gas, it could have come from Aranis, which at one time had a gas station. No one ever really determined when that happened. And mass gas has been there since the 50s, so it's been there quite a while. That was never determined, never explored. Today, if that would have happened, the DEP would intervene, they would make them dig out every piece of contamination that they find, and they're going to clean that up. So, if we start focused on what we're talking about here tonight, we're talking about whether this should be allowed in Zone 3, based on my experience back in 1996, I was a selectman for one year, we talked about it at length, and we decided that we had to impose one or the other, and we decided to go with the above ground, only because we wanted to make sure, we weren't confident with the new systems of containment, and we wanted to make sure if there's a problem, we were very much aware of it, there's no reason for it.
Thank you. Ms. Delly.
One second.
Mr. Conway?
So, I did find some information, so there are just under 3,600 active registered USD facilities in use, but there are almost 9,400 tanks.
Okay.
So, it's a significant difference there.
Ms. Delly.
Okay, so, I'm going to go back to my silly questions, and I don't know if you're going to know this. So, my first thing is, so we have a Zone 3, we're not required to have a Zone 3. So, what are the reasons behind why the town would have felt like we needed to have a Zone 3 bylaw in the first place? Like, what protections were they trying to instill?
Bob might actually be better... Was he, do you think he...
I don't know.
Bob was...
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Ms. Kimball, yeah.
We had a couple of gas stations coming into the area, asking about putting wells, putting gas stations up in a Zone 1, Zone 2, specifically right off 495. You know, back in mid-'80s is when 495 actually came through, we didn't have anything, it was all farm land. So, we started getting some concerns, so we're talking about Zone 1 and 2, making sure those are restricted anyway, the DEP has a lot of restrictions on that happening. And I'm not encouraging at any time we put any kind of a gas station in Zone 1 or 2. It should never be allowed. Zone 3 was created because of that, because we started looking beyond it, saying, "Well, you know what? If Zone 2 is here, and we're 200 feet to this side of it, there's a water flowing in that direction." That's why the town adopted it, was the Zone 3 procedures, because it was, it made sense that it came from beyond it, it could still contaminate the wells. It was all paranoia back then. We were just trying to get some controls in place, and again, we added restrictions that other towns don't necessarily have to add. So, we have a Zone 3, which some other towns don't have, and it's because we wanted to protect our wells.
So, and I think this is where I struggle with this, right? So, we did it to protect the wells. Granted, the systems today are by far, I don't want to say more robust, but less likely to have leaks, but you can still have leaks. So, the cause and effect is still there. Like, should something leak, it still has a potential to go into a Zone 2 watershed district, right? So, the risk is there. Now, understanding that, you know, one of the things that Oren said I don't agree with, like, you can't eliminate risk, it's just not possible. Like, you can mitigate it, you can put additional controls. I think one of the reasons why they're probably doing the three-year checks is because that's a control, and it's with the intent that you can catch a leak, so it's not...
Before it becomes catastrophic.
Right. Before it becomes a contamination. So, understanding that, though, like, Jack, you made the comment about the significant compliance, I personally would expect that number to be higher, and I would expect that whether, you know, like, if there's a significant versus just an operational compliance, we should strive to have significant compliance. I mean, it's something that can impact the town, the groundwater, like, we, I think, should be on top of that. And I'm just kind of going through my list. And one of the things that...
Could I have a response to...
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond? The paranoia back then, again, was to make sure we could see it. Technology's changed today. Those tanks are monitored every single day of the week. They have to go, and if you start reading the DEP specs on it, there's like, a number of different specifications they have to comply with before it happens. Well, I don't have a great concern about something like this happening at any time. It could happen with my 275-gallon oil tank. It could happen with an oil tanker driving down 495 and suddenly turning over. It happened on 24 last week when an oil truck turned over on its side. I mean, these things can happen. We have professionals in place to look at the permit and justify whether or not the variant should be allowed, number one. The fire department has a far more say in it today than it did in 96. They do a lot more investigating than they did in 96. And, you know, again, we've, Zone 1 and 2 are our main concerns. If we start 3, why don't we start looking at Zone 4? Because maybe we don't need it.
Or maybe we should.
Or Zone 5.
So, back to your point about...
Mr. Chairman?
I could. So, I think what we need to do is make sure that we have all our eggs lined up, and I get it, I mean, I understand we're concerned about what happens. This is still a process, there's still a special permit, and I really believe, Port outside Cumberland, and that sounds to be the monkey in the room right now. Whether I agree with it or not is beside the point. I have my own opinion about it myself, but the point of the matter is, if a person buys a piece of land and they have the legal right to build something on it, regardless of how we feel about it, if they follow the rules and regulations, they should be allowed to do what they're supposed to do. And we shouldn't be challenging it based on other interests, it should be based on exactly what you're talking about, what we have focus for tonight.
Ms. Delly?
Yep, so, I'm going to comment on a couple of things. You know, he brought up that there's the risk of tanker spills, overturns, you know, whatever. Well, if we, you know, thinking about that by adding another gas station, we obviously increase that risk. Right? But one of the things I want to comment on is, you know, the idea that the village center shouldn't be considered, I, like, I look at that, and I think the biggest problem that we have had historically has been that we are reacting to one use case scenario. I think this is a good example, right? It's a use case scenario for, and I don't know who made the point, but if Cumberland's wasn't going to go in a Zone 3, we wouldn't be here talking about this. Right? So, it's one use case, and that's going to dictate a change to the entire zone. And the fact of the planning board, if they're supporting the village center, I mean, there were information sessions on that, people have expressed the desire for that, to just say, "Well, we're going to push it away because we haven't done anything on it." I mean, the whole point of the master plan, of having a strategic vision, is to understand those things and make recommendations towards that effect. It's not going to happen overnight, and I think, you know, the fact of saying it shouldn't be considered because it's not here yet is just foolish, because we should be looking long-term. So, the other thing too, and again, you guys may not know this, but I think, David, you had mentioned that mass gas is in a Zone 3?
Yes.
So, how did that end up in a Zone 3 if this is prohibited?
It was existed before the Zone 3 did.
So, potentially back to the well, should something change, should a well go in and it changes, that current, anything in the current Zone 3 could become a Zone 2?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Can I ask, Ms. Delly, you had mentioned about forward-looking in the master plan, and that's still similar to this, that's going to go before a town vote, correct? And there's prohibitions within that plan that the planning board is suggesting that a six-member, eight-member planning board might want, but 19,000 town members might not want. So, that's forward-looking, it's not on the docket today. I think we need to compartmentalize, just this article here for, it sounds like we're getting project-specific and then forward-looking specific. This is just a modification to the bylaw to give an extra, it's going to give two layers of security, or two layers of approval or denial, from the granting board who monitors and is responsible, and is going to take all of the heat for saying, "You supported this project with the rules and recommendations that you had submitted in the bylaw. Fire department, you did the same thing." I think we have to rely on, these guys are the professionals that deal with this stuff, these are their careers, their lives. So, they know the intricacies of how these mechanisms work, how these tanks work, and they're not going to put their name on the line if they say, "Hey, for this particular property, it looks good, but down on 140, 400 feet from the well, no, I don't like it, we're not going to approve it." So, I think you have to consider, based off of the range of the Zone 3 and the limits of the Zone 3, that we allow it and let those two boards make the final recommendation. We're just, I think we're getting caught up in, like, saying, "If we vote for it, we're saying, 'Well, we voted for the project.'" We're just allowing those two professional boards to listen to the other professionals that provide the tanks, monitor the groundwater, professional engineers, the actual professionals, to do their jobs, put their name and their stamps on the line, and let them, let it get to the point where they are making their decisions. That's why we have these boards. So, if the water department and the fire department are making a recommendation for this, and then we say, "Well, the planning board, two out of the five, one gentleman saying this, one gentleman saying that," I think that discredits those two other boards. I think we have to leave it up...
I think we're kind of getting away from the scope here, so I appreciate it, but if you, just try to get it back to the bylaw.
Yeah, so, the bylaw itself, we just need to decouple, it's only getting to the point where we are allowing the vote or the opportunity for the planning board in conjunction with the water department on a case-by-case basis in a village commercial Zone 3 district to vote whether they're going to grant it or they're not going to grant it, and let them duke it out. Let those departments, let them give the reasoning as to why they approved it or why they denied it.
Thank you very much. Any further que... Peter?
Yes, I'm bringing up the fire situation I brought, I witnessed the Ennis Fields explosion out of Metville in September 2019. Is there going to be any control, like, in case the gas station catches fire, will the fire department be prepared to fight the fire?
I'm certain that they would be, Peter. Mr. Kimball?
Just want to clarify, mass gas. 1996, we adopted a bylaw. 2002, 2003, 2004, I don't remember what year it was, the DEP came and ordered mass gas to take those tanks out of the ground and put in new double-line tanks, after we adopted the bylaw. So, the big question here tonight is, why weren't they made to put the gas tanks on top of the ground? That didn't happen. They were allowed because of a grandfather, I don't buy that part of it. They were allowed to replace the tanks, put them back in the ground in double capacity to make sure that they were protected, and other alarm systems, if they had back in those days. So, I'm not sure why it was done that way, I don't remember why, but just another point, we had the bylaw, why didn't we vote with that?
Yeah.
Well, it's speculation too on the reasoning behind it, so it's not that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want a clarification, the bylaw, the proposed bylaw does not mention approval of the water department. So, I know that was one of the concerns of the board as well, the planning board.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So, I see here on the recommendations from the water sewer, that item number two, "While the commission is not opposed to gasoline stations being allowed in a Zone 3, we suggest that the special permit granting authority do so on a case-by-case basis in cooperation with the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners." So, it does seem like they do want to insert themselves. Are you saying that they don't have the authority to grant the special permit?
No, and I'm fine with them inserting themselves, I'm saying in the proposed bylaw, it does not state that that's required.
Okay.
So, that's, I just wanted to clarify.
Sure. Mr. Cohen, is, do you plan on having a modified motion?
Yeah, so, evidently, I'm allowed to do that at, I don't know, this is the first time I've done it, I submitted it as I thought. I was told during the deliberations between the boards that input like this could be given, and then it gets notified on town floor, whoever made, I don't know, I'm asking.
You can make amendments to the...
Amendments, yeah. Yeah, and that would be a certain amendment in conjunction with the special planning board, special granting authority, that the water department definitely wants to insert themselves. Yes, thank you.
Great. Any further discussion? Thank you.
Can I just clarify, you might have just answered this, but by our bylaw, the special permit granting authority is only the planning board. But as a practice, when we get applications in, we distribute to the different departments, so the water department would definitely get it, and they would provide comments to the planning board, which the board would then consider.
And I'm sure in cases like this, their voice would carry a lot of weight from you guys, since they are responsible for ultimately the safety of the water.
So, and just to clarify before we go on, you, the planning board did not recommend this, right? Five against?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so, chair would entertain a motion to recommend Article 18 as written in the warrant?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Are we just going to take a vote?
Well, we can open it to discussion, and then, yeah, see if there's any further discussion, then we can take it to a vote if there is not.
So, we can do a second for discussion, then?
Sure.
Now we have to discuss. So, you know, I'm not really comfortable with this at all. We just speak about, you know, Mr. Cohen, the point about, you know, two legit departments, fire and water, having something to say with it, and that we should trust them. And on the other hand, we have a bunch of people who are on the planning board who spend a lot of time on this too. They've spent way more hours looking at this than we have tonight. I don't feel that I have put in the time or effort to make a recommendation to town meeting, however, I'm not saying I have a problem with town meeting votes on this. I would hope that there would be more experts there tonight. What we heard, I think, was an argument from either side, but we didn't really have any outside experts supporting one side or the other. My gut is, we've got a planning board that's here to look at the best interests of the town. I don't know Mr. Cohen at all, I know that this bylaw is, he's putting it forward because there's got to be something else coming down the pike. I don't have a problem with this going to town meeting floor, I do have a problem voting to recommend it, saying that I'm voting in favor of it, because honestly, tonight, I'm not sure whether I'm for or against it, I'll have to make that decision on Monday when I hear more information.
Okay, thank you.
So, I won't say I'm in the exact same vote, but I don't see, with any of this discussion tonight, I'm not an expert, but there was no discussion tonight that made me really be in favor of this when the planning board was not. Like, I trust in the planning board, I think that, you know, they have the expertise in this area, and they consider it, and, you know, if it, I mean, it was five against and two for, it wasn't even like a four or five split or something close, so I won't recommend this. I'm going to default to the planning board, I think that, you know, I trust in their judgment.
Mr. Cohen, you have anything?
No, I think what I've heard, and when you separate out the project-specific concerns that I've heard from some planning board members and from FinCom, I think the zoning bylaw, I don't have an issue with. I think the project-specific, there's a whole other kettle of fish, and that can be discussed at a later point. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, and actually, so I see where both Ms. Steele and Ms. Delly are coming from, but I tend to agree with you, Mr. Conway, where the... but I tend to agree with you, Mr. Conway, where the zoning article as it is, I don't have a big issue with it, with the changes. You know, on a case-by-case basis, project by project, it depends on where, you know, there's a lot, but the zoning article as it's in front of us, I tend to agree with you. So, any further discussion?
I just, I find it interesting, you know, when you look at this map and you see the watershed on here, there are many other places, many other places where it wouldn't be an issue.
But again, that's project-specific and not related to the zone, right?
Right.
No, and I'm not saying project-specific. I mean, I'm more than happy to have COMBs in here, right? I go to them at least once a week now. I'm just saying that, you know, the watershed district is there.
But this is about the whole zone across town.
Right, right, and that's what I mean. It's the whole zone across the town. And so, I look at areas, like, this wouldn't preclude, not changing the bylaw doesn't preclude a business from coming in, a gas station from coming in, because there are other areas that aren't subject to being in the Zone 3 watershed district. That's what I'm saying. I just, I don't see the, I think, I don't know if I would actually think differently if it was all watershed, but I don't see the need to potentially have additional risk in putting a gas station in a Zone 3 area when there are other areas that gas stations can go in. That's my point.
But this isn't a vote to put a gas station, it just, again, just for clarification, because there's still, that has to go through a permitting process.
No, I understand that, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of recommending Article 18 as written in the warrant?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So-
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Steele?
Can we discuss a little bit further? The other issue is, this article's going to be amended on town meeting floor.
I believe that to be true.
We're actually recommending an article that is not going to be moved anyways.
Unfortunately, as, we have to move what's in front of us. You know, I can't anticipate that there will be a, an amendment to the motion or amendment to the article on town meeting floor. I believe that there will be, but we have to vote based on what's in front of us at the time. So, I, on a tie vote, it's a no, yep. Okay, so we, not recommending Article 18. We got on to, now I have this paper in front of me, I've lost my-
Mr. Flaherty, while you're looking for that, can I ask you a question, please?
Yes.
So, one of the things, given that this was a two-two split, what I'd like to see on, and if we can't do it on the warrant, but separately, is how the board voted on each of these articles, so that the townspeople understand where we may have been split, or-
Because it's, just historically, because it's the Finance Committee that makes the recommendations or makes the motions on floor, it's they who are included, but we often give our own opinion as to where the Board of Selectmen-
So, I would just like that in writing for all the articles. I think we can provide a list of articles to say this is how the Board of Selectmen voted.
Okay, we'll take that, I guess, into consideration.
We really, so far, only have to give this one, because we've been unanimous on every other one.
Right.
So, we could just ask the FinCom to let it be known, because, again, the purpose of my vote tonight is not to discourage anybody at town meeting from voting for this. I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm not in the position to say that they should be voting for it.
Yeah.
So, I think it would be important for them to know that it was a two-two split, that this wasn't, you know-
Well, we also voted no action on two articles at this point as well, so, again, like, I think that's information that should be shared. I don't see, I don't see any reason why, if this is the board's warrant, why we can't-
It's not the board's warrant.
It's the Board of Selectmen owned this.
The Finance Committee will have the sheet that'll go to the score sheet.
Yeah, oh, the score sheet will go, will include ours as well?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the score sheets will be there at the town meeting?
Okay, so they'll be printed and available for-
Mm-hmm. Okay, so-
That's what I heard. I heard that the Finance Committee will have the sheet available.
Including ours. So, this will be available at town meeting, yeah.
Printed for the townspeople?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. We have Article 119, petition of Robert Kimball for a town school enrollment assessment study for the Norton Public Schools through June 2025. Mr. Kimball?
I'm Kimball, 51 Pine Street, for the record. Now, before I get into the actual conversation, I'd like to take a moment to actually read the proposed bylaw article, just so the general public hears what the proposal is all about. "The city of Norton will raise, will vote to raise appropriate and now transfer from the general fund free cash or any other appropriate fund of saving money not to exceed $45,000 for a town school enrollment assessment study through June of 2025. The town will mandate independent qualified education consulting firm to conduct a feasibility study as to current and future space needs for all the existing Norton Public Schools. The assessment will be under the direction of town manager and superintendent of schools. This request will include, but will not be limited to, creating an RFQ, long-range enrollment forecast for the year 2030, a survey of existing buildings to determine the needs of the district's capacity in relation to planned educational programs, and all the costs assigned to each of the schools, along with a cost assessment to consolidate school buildings if possible. The school enrollment assessment will be completed by March 31st, 2020." So, what I'd like to start up by saying is, I'm not suggesting we close a school. Now, I know there's been some, I met with the Finance Committee right away, you know, the issues started, arrived, to arise, like, you know, larger class sizes, getting rid of teachers, all this other stuff. This is not the intent of this article. The article is to look at each building and assess as to whether or not we need, still need five school buildings. Enrollment has dropped almost 800 in the last 10 years, and it's going to continue to drop until the year 2030. I recently attended a forum at Wheaton College, and the president of the college is talking about their issues and how they're having a problem getting senior high school students to colleges, because colleges now are actually out there competing for students, because the enrollment continues to drop, because the population continues to drop. And they predicted, President Haynes predicted that until the year 2030, they would continue to see a decrease in senior high school population drop every year until then. So, what I've given you is some information that I've come up with, and part of my reasoning for asking this to be done is because neither the numbers seem to match, when you start looking at everything. You've got the Department of Education, you've got a couple of other agencies to start looking at various facets of the school population, and they don't really give you, I think they're giving you what they think is honest information, but there's no way to really know one way or the other. The top copy I gave you, if you look at it, shows enrollment by school per year up to the year ending 2019. The hay has 382, the JCS has 488, LGN 265, middle school at 587, and the high school has 716. If you look at the bottom, the highest enrollment year for the hay was 559. Presently, they have 395. And there, if you look further down, where I scribbled in on the bottom, what that is, that's the capacity of that school building, 1,890 is the capacity of the Yale School. Now, while I'm not, I agree with that, I don't, I can't imagine putting that many students in there, but here and there, that's the reasoning behind it. If you look at the JCS, the highest they've ever had is 747, this year is 462, and the school will hold 1,080 students. The LGN is at 492 at the highest, 285 this year, and can hold 780. The middle school is at 832 at the highest, 587 this year, and can hold 1,710. In the high school, and I'm not sure if this is a correct reflection, the high school with a new addition, but the highest they've ever had is 767, they have 744, and the school will hold 1,200. If you go to the back of the pages, the back three pages, this is a report, it's application for certificate of inspection. And according with the provisions of the Massachusetts State Building Code, Section 106.5, I hereby apply for certificate of inspection for the low-name premises located at the following address. In this particular one, I just gave you the copy of the Yale School. If you go to the final page, it clearly indicates there, at the very bottom, I hereby certify that in pains of penalty and perjury, pains and penalty of perjury, that the information provided above is true and correct. If you look at this, this is a report that was generated by the school department. It states that the classroom on the first floor can hold 1,230 students, classroom on the second floor, 330, and the classroom on the third floor can hold less than 330. 1,890 students, in my opinion, is way too much for that building, but that's, that is what has been certified. So, my argument is, if you look at page two, you've got New England School Development Council, and on the right-hand side, there's some handwriting, I'm not sure who did this, but on the page two, you'll see that there's some information on the side that conflicts with the information that was actually generated by NESDEC. And one thing I want to show you is, again, my scribbling on the left, if you look at the birth on the left-hand side and follow it down, you'll notice that the birth rates are different for every year. The birth rates that I have is from the annual town report, certified by the town clerk, and every one of these birth rates is higher than what is, was actually reported. The town clerk actually has the actual enrollments. You go to the third page, clearly, it says to the bottom on the box, the box in the bottom right, that there are 236 less students expected between 19 and 29, 2019 and 2029. So, even though these numbers, they're still projecting, continuing to project decreases. Page four was from the Elementary and Secondary Education Program. They're showing 2,438 students in 2019. The New England School Development Council shows 2,336, and the Department of Education shows the same number, 2,438 students. So, again, the numbers are all over the place. The last page was from page three, the educational plan, program plan, that was generated by a number of parents, I believe, and probably backed up by a number of educators also. But if you look at the two areas that were circled, according to this, and this was raid case, we're five at the hay, had 236 students, it said partial building available town to Norton, available to town of Norton. On the JCS, again, it says partial building available to town of Norton. So, the reason for the petition, and I want to stress that I'm not interested in spending $45,000. I think that's a lot of money. I think the town could use that money for other purposes. All I'm looking for is a clear, honest assessment of the five existing schools, to determine whether or not we still need all five. And if we don't, if we still need the five, I'll accept that. But what I want to know is, will we need them in two years, three years, five years from now? Will this space still be needed? And the reason I'm asking for that is, the town is about ready to get involved in a building project for a new town hall, community building. Someday along the way, we're going to be doing that. What I don't want to see is, five years from now, coming back and looking at one of the schools and saying, "You know what? We really don't need that school." So, now what are we going to do with it? After the town has spent millions and millions of dollars building two new buildings, you know, it doesn't make sense for us to do that. At a recent meeting last spring, the Board of Selectmen had a joint meeting with the school committee and with the building committee, and discussed the proposal for Elm Street. The school committee consistently said, "What is your Plan B? What is your Plan B?" Our Plan A was, three years ago, we asked the schools if they needed all the space they needed. We felt at that time, the board at that time, felt that we had extra space, that we could possibly use for other purposes. And we were told, "No, that wasn't, that wasn't the case, that they needed all the space." What I'm looking for is the honest assessment of the schools. Now, I spoke to the chairman of the Finance Committee the other night, and I had mixed feelings from him, and obviously, it would be a difficult sell to the Finance Committee. But I had a conversation with him and said, "Look, under your regulations, you're allowed to investigate. I would ask that the Finance Committee, just take these questions and ask them. I don't care if it's a former committee, I don't care how you do it, just ask these questions, get some straight answers from people, have the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, and the Finance Committee all sign off that the information is as honest as they can make it, and some of the questions may not be able to be answered. I don't know." If that would happen, I would move this article, because I don't want to spend $45,000. I honestly don't want to spend it. If I can't get one of these boards or committees to step forward and look into this, then I have no other alternative than to stand up and try to move this article at town meeting floor. I don't expect, I believe the FinCom took no action on it, so they won't move the article, but I will if I have to. So, I want to stress again, this is not about getting rid of teachers. This is not about increasing class sizes. This is the question about whether or not we need these buildings. And if we don't need one of them, you have to ask, the big question is, all this extra money and revenue that could be generated from saving the cost, just take utilities along, improvements, infrastructure costs, whatever it might be. That money could be better used. I'm not even suggesting we tell the schools they can't spend it. They have other projects, other things they're trying to do, and then they don't have the ability to do it. They're increasing their fees on sports and bus services that are changing all the time. You know, maybe this money could be utilized for another purpose, other than just keeping a building partially open that one as a town probably could put a town hall into, if nothing else. So, that's my question. So, my question to you, Mr. Chairman, is, I'm perfectly willing to take this at town meeting floor, but you as a board, would you consider taking this warrant article and trying to come up with some answers to my questions? And if we can do that, I won't move it to town meeting floor, because I really don't want to spend the money. But I will if I have to.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Ms. Kimball?
I have several questions, maybe more statements as well. So, I had the privilege to attend FinCom when you first presented this there. So, a couple of the statements that you made really caused some concern to me. One is, you know, you start off, and you said it here in respect to the potential for using one of the buildings for a town hall. At the meeting, you said the purpose of this was to see if there was an assessment to determine if a school building could serve as a town hall. So, in my eyes, we have given that authority to the permanent building committee, and I think that that's a discussion that should happen with them, and that should be part of their site selection. And having said that, you know, we're asking the town to allocate more money for that site selection, and I think that that would be covered under here. Like, I don't, I have issue with, you know, the inference that the last study that was conducted in 2017, and I am going to ask Bonnie to represent that, because she spoke at it at FinCom, she was part of that review committee, but there's an inference there that the information was not accurate or intentionally was false.
I didn't use the word "false."
No, I'm, I'm saying, that's what I said-
Don't put words in my mouth, please.
So, I don't have to put words in your mouth, because I quoted you, saying you wanted objective information, it's not about finances. You also said you're specifically targeting elementary school. So, you know, those, again, like I said, it was the inference, like somebody is lying. You made a comment, people like myself want an objective outside agency to look at these, at these numbers, and I think it makes sense. So, again, for me to process that, it's as if the information that we've had from 2017, in which these recommendations were given on one of your pages, and you mentioned, Bob, and I think it may have just been a slip on here, that you said that they offered space in the JCS, but both of these buildings that have the circle sections are both at the hay for their options. And it looks like, it looks like these are two options, side by side, based on what you- side based on, on what you provided. So, I don't think that there's any, any disagreement about enrollment going down. The other thing that was discussed at FinCom, which I thought was an excellent idea, and, and I thought that I heard you say that you would support it as well, was if the school committee, in conjunction with other boards, looked at these numbers, again, internally, so that we didn't have a spend of $45,000. I mean, I just think with everything with Reed and Barton, the money that, you know, we're up to $600,000 on a property, that we didn't intend to have such an expenditure, that seeing that there was a study two years ago, there are some options provided, I think, I, I wouldn't see, and maybe this is something for the joint, the joint meeting, but I would not see the, the school committee or anyone in the town not working together to determine, you know, if there's a better, if there's an opportunity to save money, really. You know, if we close a school, we're going to save operational expenses. So, having said that, I think, the other thing, too, is you mentioned these numbers about...
Chairman, can I answer the, answer the question? First of all, and I'll say it again, if I can get the commitment from the three committees, the committees and boards to look at these numbers, I will, I will move the article. What I'm looking for is a consensus of this three, finance committee, school committee, Board of Selectmen. I would like you guys, all of you, to look at this, to make sure that you feel comfortable with the numbers that we, we come up with, wherever they come from. To come up with these numbers, if you feel that they're, they're logical, if you say, as accurate as we, we can determine, and they, they make sense, that's what I'm looking for. Because what I want to do with that information is go back to the townspeople and say, you know what, we asked about the schools, they need the schools. Let's move on. Well, we're not going to move on with two other building projects and say we get some answers on whether or not one of these buildings could be utilized for another purpose. And that's the whole reason behind this. So, I want to be clear about that. That's the reason for it. I'm not trying to cut into anything that the school system's doing these days. You know, they're working on a shoestring, I get it. It could, it could open up additional revenue if it's done right. So, whatever works will work for me, if it's an open building or closed building. Now, I've got the information, I need to go back to the building committee and say, let's forget about the schools, let's move on. Because the building committee has never looked at a school, because they haven't had, never had the opportunity to do so, because there's never been one available. So, that option has never been put on the table.
Well, and back to the point, I, I think it's a better discussion with the building committee.
Well, I, I wouldn't say it was never put on the table, because originally, that building committee approached the schools about the Yale.
Two, three years ago.
Yeah.
And is that where the study, why the study was, why the options were provided, there was, there was partial space within the hay to use it? So...
May have been, I don't know. But they, originally, when the building committee was first formed, their first thing was to talk to the schools about the Yale School, and they said there was no space available.
Mr. Chairman, also, I never saw that study. I didn't even know it was done.
This?
Yeah, I, I got that recently from somebody.
This one here?
Yeah, there's, there's about, there's a few pages to it. It's not just that.
Yeah, I, I have the study. So, but...
Hold on, Ms. Dally, Ms. Yesikovich?
I just wanted to clarify one thing about the study. I believe the page that you were referring to is one of the first few pages. So, what you're, it was the Board of Selectmen that asked, at the time, that asked the schools to do this evaluation. I was on that committee, which is why I'm speaking. Bonnie Yesikovich, I didn't say.
That's okay.
Straight, I'm sorry. So, on this sheet, it lists the three options that were evaluated, and that's what's on every page. And they went with option three. So, I just wanted to be clear that three options were not presented as a result of the study. It was, three options were evaluated, and the third option, to keep things the same, was what was the results or the solution that they deemed was appropriate for the current enrollment. And what I did say at the FinCom meeting a couple last week, a couple of weeks ago, was that the same information could be requested again, I think fairly simply, from the current superintendent, the same superintendent and the current school committee, that they could update the information. And they were not, this information was not requested of them to be updated, and that would be able to be done for free, rather than for the, the $45,000. I believe the numbers aren't entirely accurate. I know there was some discussion about that at the finance committee meeting as well. And even if they were, it looks like it's about a 13 or 14 percent decline in enrollment over ten or so years. So, that's to the tune of maybe thirty, forty, forty-five students. And just to the point that was made earlier about the finance committee not taking any action, that was actually at a later meeting, we voted zero to nine to recommend it. So, it's actually not recommended in the warrant. So, you know, the statement...
Wait, so again, you voted zero to, so zero for, nine against?
Yes.
Okay.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yes. And so, you know, I feel as though, and I said this at the time, at the meeting that he spoke at our FinCom meeting, I feel as though if we want an honest assessment, we can go to the superintendent and request updates to the same report that was done two and a half years ago. And that if we ask those questions again, we will still get straight answers. But that hasn't been requested of them at this time, so we don't have that information for the current school. So...
Actually, Ms. Yesikovich, can I, Bonnie, can I, can I please, can I see what that is just, Ms. Units?
Can you let me know what meeting that was voted at?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and Bonnie?
It would have been the Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Was that report ever shared outside of that committee?
Oh, yes. It was presented at a Board of Selectmen meeting.
Okay.
It was months of exploration. Like you said, there were parents, there were school committee members. The superintendent was not in on the meetings. He came at the end to hear the recommendations.
Okay.
There were teachers, there was, you know, a variety of people involved with the schools, as well as Carolyn, who is now on the school committee, and myself, who is now on the FinCom. So, we weren't at the time.
And, and you had said that they voted to take no action. Who's they? Was it the committee, or was it the Board of Selectmen? You said you presented three options?
Oh, I see. So, we evaluated, we evaluated three options, and in the end, determined that the best option at the time was the third option, which was no change.
Okay. So, the committee recommended that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly. Because that's what the superintendent presented to the Board of Selectmen, March of 2017.
So, Mr. Chairman, what it didn't include, though, was, and again, that's part of my proposal, was future enrollments in the middle school and high school. It did, it did address the three elementary, but it didn't address the other two schools.
Ms. Conley? Sorry, I just want to clarify one thing. So, this was presented to the Board of Selectmen, and I made, Ms. Er...
Remembered.
So, yeah, because I, Mr. Kimball, you said you hadn't seen that report until very recently.
I don't remember.
If it was presented.
Again, if, if Dr. Byer were asked for that information, I'm sure he could tell you the exact date that he presented to the board.
Okay. Ms. Steele?
So, thank you both for letting us know about this. So, for me, looking at this, well, just two things. One, it just seems like every time we have override requests or a, talk about a new building, it always comes into play, the people against what we're looking to spend money on, say, the, well, why do we have to, you know, the schools are declining, blah, blah, blah. Even in the paperwork that we have in front of us tonight, there's some discrepancies between what the Department of Education and Norton has provided. So, you know, from my point of view, this seems like a pretty easy solution. Why don't we just charge somebody, if it's a voting committee, fine, but why not maybe even James and the, the business manager over at the schools to put some numbers together for all five schools? And if there's a discrepancy, just explain it out. I mean, there may be a good explanation to this. Maybe there's school choice, or international students, or, you know, maybe there's some explanations that we're not getting just by looking at numbers, right? So, you know, clearly, there's, you know, if we go with just the school side, we're going to have people who are going to criticize that report. So, I feel like if we get two legit people from either side, charge them with going to pull the numbers together, come back to us, and then just get it out in the public, and let it die. Because honestly, this argument has been going on for 15 years, or more.
Actually, I think that's, I think that's a great idea. And I think it's, again, the collaboration between the two sides, like you said, will lend itself to...
It takes away the...
Yeah, get away from the distrust.
Get the, get the facts, they're out there.
And we could probably have that handled prior to the, well, I don't know what the timeframe would be, but we could potentially have that handled before the joint meeting on December 5th.
Just one question I always had about this report, is, the report listed costs of rearranging the schools. But it never, as far as I know, I was never presented with any savings. So, in other words, if you close the L G Norse, and you have to move the kids somewhere else, there's a cost for moving vans, and there's a cost for this, and a cost for that, and cost to change. But there was never a presentation, if we close a school, we save utilities, maintenance. I never saw any of that.
Well, isn't that because the options in there? The two options are that, to, for the town to use the partial space that would be available. That's, that's what Bob had circled on his.
I don't believe that was recommended.
But then that, that would relate in a savings for the school, though, if that happened.
But it's not a savings overall for the town, because you're still occupying that space. So, I, I don't, I don't know.
I know, but like Bob's...
I agree with you. Like, I think we should understand, I think we should know what the operational costs are. And I said this at FinCom. So, you, you had asked, I think, of, of, of FinCom to request the schools, right, provide with, provide us with operational expenses.
By, by school.
Right. And I said, as part of that, why aren't we doing it for the town facilities, too? We should know what every town building is costing us to run. Like, there should be no question. I don't care if it's school, if it's library, whatever, we should do it across the town.
Mr. Chairman, I actually agree with Renee's last statement, especially since we are actually asking the town to invest in two new buildings.
Right.
So, we're asking them to invest in two new buildings, and obviously, with the discussion tonight, and totally respect both of you, but there's a miscommunication somewhere. And how can we move forward until we know what we actually have? And again, it's an argument that has been going on forever. We can't ask the townspeople to invest in another building until we know what the ones we have are costing us. I think that's a good point, Renee.
Right. And I think it leads back to, we had some questions initially with the town hall project, right, where, where there were no expenses, like, there, there were no increases in operational expenses. And we said, how could that be? You're, you know, doubling, tripling the size, and it was because of the cost savings. But we didn't know, what were we, you know, what are we, what heat are we expelling from this building that's costing us versus what we're going to get in a new building? So, I, I think it all feeds into the same thing, and understanding what's the approach going to be for the P B C and coming with options, right?
Right, right.
And again, Mr. Chairman, if, if, I love your idea, I think it's a great idea, Mary. I agree with all you're saying, too. I'm looking for information. If we can get straight information, obviously, this article, I can bring it up at town meeting, we can have a long discussion about it. You know, again, to make, make sure everyone understands that there are, there are some questions out there that haven't been answered. But if you guys are going to take the role of getting some, some answers to some of the questions, I'll back off. I'm just looking for an answer.
The other problem with having a discussion about this on town meeting floor, is Mr. Kimball's going to present one set of numbers, and, I'm sorry, I keep looking at you, Bonnie, sorry. And the, the school is going to present another set of numbers, and it's just going to be divided in the room.
It's, yeah.
So, we're arguing over numbers, and we don't know which set is...
Exactly.
Because if we can't make that determination with the people in the room tonight, there's no way we're going to do it with 75 people.
And the reality is, is that, you know, I, I provided some copies, too, of the New England School Development Council numbers, right? Different, again, from like clear.gov. Like, they're all going to have different criteria. So, if somebody is charged with looking at these numbers and say, well, what are you looking at that captures your number, to your point, so we understand why are the numbers different, and which, and then we decide, which number do we want to look at, right? Do we include school choice? Do we not include school choice?
Depends on which side you're on, and which one supports your...
Well, I, I, I think the overall is, really, from my perspective, is how many people are sitting in that building. I don't care if it's school choice, I don't care for something else.
No, correct.
It's important to have, maybe break out school choice as a separate line, right?
Yeah, just a show.
Because that is a moneymaker, we hear time and time again for the, for the town. I'm a data nerd. The more data points we have to make informed decisions, I'm all about that. Whether it's James and the business manager, whether it's a consortium of the three boards working for it, I, I'm fully on board with trying to get that, so we can kind of stop the bickering back and forth, and we come to an agreed set of numbers. Because, yes, the numbers are off, but they all agree that the trend line is going down. I don't think there's ever been any pushback on that from the schools, right? They, they understand that.
They're not here. So, it's hard to, right, like you said, represent exactly...
Yeah, but I think that the, the, Ms. Steele's idea is, is actually a fantastic one. And then, the findings can come to the three boards, and we can hash it out from there and, and see which way to go. So, I think that's something that we can take under advisement, maybe have a discussion with James and, ooh, it's not Lincoln anymore, is it? Who's?
Matt.
Matt, Matt, well... Matt, thank you.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, okay. So...
Obviously, I'm looking for answers, and if these financial people can give me the answers, I'm happy with that.
Okay.
But I'm not getting, I'm not getting a straight answer, based on the information we're looking at. It's not anyone's fault. I think the agencies may be reporting their own numbers based on information they're getting from somewhere else. I don't know what's coming from.
Did you see, Bob, the, the big chart that they had at the Master Plan Session? Because they actually had a whole section on the student enrollment, and it looked, because it was only a 10-year, it was 10 years, right?
10 years.
A 10-year spread. It looked like incredibly dramatic. But again, back to the, it was 11 or 13 percent decline.
13.8.
13, see? Data nerd.
Yep.
Yeah, and if you look at the enrollment decline in the next 10 years, it's actually the population, almost the population of the Yale School. If you look at the total, now it continues to drop.
Yeah, I, I don't, I can't speak to that, because I don't know what they're considering in that, right? Like, real estate change.
I don't know either. It was one of the agencies, you've got the information in front of you there. One of the agencies, uh...
I mean, they, they had it in, give me one second, Bob. And I can share this with you if you want to see it.
I mean, right now, the...
Projected enrollment up to 2028.
Right. The L G N is showing 285, and then the projected historical percentage increase changes. No, it wasn't that one. It was on the next page, page three, I think. Shows a decrease in 236 students between 19 and 29, 2029. If you take that 236 and look at the 285 at the L G N, again, I'd only be five years out, and suddenly have, have the schools say, you know, I got this building, I have nothing to do with it, and we're building two new facilities for $300, $400 million. It just doesn't make sense.
And, and those numbers line up with what the New England School Development Council did, too. Because they're, they're showing 2238 in 2018, and then 2007 students in 2028. So, I think if we work together, then we can, we can make this happen very easily.
And I think we have a good plan moving forward and...
I respect both of those gentlemen, and I'm sure they'll come back with the correct answers. I have a lot of respect for both of them. I think they'll do fine.
The result of their answers has had a direct impact on the building committee.
You're out of it.
Yeah.
So, I kind of think we should put a timeframe on this.
And to you?
I'm sorry?
I, what I think we should do, I think, I think we need to talk to them first to see what, what's feasible.
Which I'm fine with, but maybe make it an agenda item for two weeks to get an update, have the conversation happened, and who's going to do it, and where we're going. Because I don't see how we can go forward with the planning board, I'm sorry, the building committee making any plans until we, because I feel this is really important before we move forward.
Agreed. Good point.
Yeah, they're, they're planning on being able to make a recommendation at the spring annual town meeting. So, we got to, we got to move.
Yeah, maybe seek their opinion, too, on when, when they would like the data based on their timeline, should their articles, their article pass.
Okay, terrific. Yes, Peter?
Yes, I remember when they closed the L G Norse school back in September 1983 because of the failed override.
And then they reopened it, right?
They reopened it a month, a month later.
A month later.
A month later. How is effective?
Anything, anything else?
No, I appreciate your time, and thank you for your consideration. I obviously would suggest no action on my article, and we'll see what happens with these reports. And again, I have a lot of confidence that the two gentlemen you're talking about will give us the information we're looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that being said, the chair would entertain a motion for no action on Article 19, as written in the warrant.
Can I ask again, why, why aren't we doing the not recommended? Like, why are we doing no action again?
Well, because I, I feel like, you know, I, I think we're recommending the, getting the data, we're just not taking action as it's written in the warrant. So, I, I don't think we're not recommending...
Specifically, what we're voting on is the warrant. I mean, we're saying we, we want to pursue another opportunity, so we're not supporting this warrant. You know, and again, going back to, I mean, that's exactly how FinCom voted.
But again, how FinCom voted is irrelevant to this board. And I, I, you can make the motion however you'd like. I'm just not, no action is, is, because again, I'm not... I'm just not, no action is, is, because again, I'm not not recommending this. I, I think that the, that the data and the information in the study is, is important. I just think that that not recommending gives a different connotation as to not needed. Just my opinion. You can make a motion however you'd like.
Mr. Chair, I move no action on Article 19.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, three to one there.
Wait, is that going to be confusing now? Because I, I'm saying no because I, I don't recommend the article, not...
It doesn't really matter. Vote however you want. With majority, it's going to go in.
Yeah.
It's going in that it's not recommended, so...
Yeah, it's, yeah, going in, no, no, no action now.
Thanks.
Yeah, no, no stress. So, stick to your principle and vote no. And it still goes in as not recommended.
Well, again, so this goes back to, right, I asked for the way that we voted to show on there. They don't know that we, that we voted to take no action, right? Like, you're, like, all the votes are, to your earlier point, in the affirmative, and then you vote yes or no.
Well, this, this spreadsheet's going to come out showing no action on it. So, the, how we vote is, is, is on this.
So, it'll show FinCom not recommended, Board of Selectmen no action. Is that what you're saying?
Right. And, and so it's going to look like my no vote, which is no against no action, it's really not recommended, is in favor of, see what I mean? In favor of the...
But if it's, are we going to break it down on this one? Or will we...
No, it would just, it would just show the aggregate. It would just show what the result is.
As the planning board, we're breaking down because we want town meeting to know that it was a close vote, right? So, are you saying you want this one broken down?
Well, I want all of them broken down. Like, I, you know, like the, so 18, we were, you know, not recommended, two to two, right? I think they should all, they should all say whatever the action is, recommended unanimous. No action unanimous.
Just make it easy. FinCom voted not recommended, I mean...
Are we going to abstain and have a 3-0 vote for not recommend, for no action?
But it's still, like...
I'm just, plus confusing that way. Yeah, Ms. Units?
Usually what happens, I know, like, at my town meeting where I live, if a committee votes three to one and the one person can, sometimes stands up and says the way they voted, or someone in the audience may say, well, why was there one person voting differently? Can they explain why? I mean, that, I know that's the way it works at our town meeting.
I understand your point, Renee. I do, I don't know how to...
Right. I mean, that's the thing, is like, you vote, you know, and, and I remember watching a very confusing FinCom meeting a while ago where they were trying to vote in a negative, and then they got all confused when they actually voted. So, you always vote in affirmative.
Yep. And then if it doesn't pass, then it goes as a knock.
Yeah. So, can I just ask, so you guys have, you had some no action versus not recommended, right? Was it put forth as no action, to vote on no action?
Yes, so that we voted in the affirmative to vote no action. So, nine to zero in the affirmative for no action versus, I, someone would say, I move Article 7 in the amount of this, for this purpose, from this place. And all those in favor, and no one raises their hand. All those opposed, and nine people do, to vote to not recommend it. And then it says in the warrant, not recommended.
So, what's the difference in, in your mind, in the mind of the FinCom, not asking you to repre, you know, between no action and not recommend? Because functionally, they're the same. The article doesn't get moved by FinCom on, at town meeting.
I believe the process at town meeting is different. So, Mike, do you have a piece of that?
Say that again, boy.
Is the process at town meeting different if something is, what the FinCom says or the chairman of the FinCom says from the stage, is different if the, has not been recommended versus if there's no action?
Right.
Because typically, Bill will say, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Chairman, and then there's no action. So, the FinCom says not recommended.
Right.
And he bangs his gavel and says, Article 7 has not been moved based on no action from the finance committee.
It's some lack of emotion.
Lack of emotion, exactly.
Yep.
Right. So, but that's the thing. So, finance committee, where you voted no action, we'll say no action at this time. Where you voted not to recommend, it will say not recommended versus recommended.
So, does it get moved, then, by the FinCom chairman if it's not recommended, is the question?
Yeah, it should. It should be moved.
Yeah, I would think.
No action.
Yeah, yeah, actually, it would get moved, yeah.
Right? It has to get moved, just because we're not recommending it, people get to vote, right?
Right.
That's confusing.
So, if you vote not recommended, it's going to go to vote. If you vote no action, it's going to be skipped.
Unless somebody makes a motion from the floor.
That doesn't seem right.
Yeah, it seems like not recommend would be...
That at town meeting.
Yeah.
There's a charter commission when you need it.
So, Mike, Mr. Chairman, as an example, right, we, what were the first two we did tonight? There were two articles that we voted, oh, was it in the special?
That's a flex of bargaining, no action.
Because we've got nothing, right? So, no action. So, here it is, anybody move it, right? Nobody moves it.
Right.
Right? So, that's no action. If somebody could get up from the public, but if they don't, right, and then not recommended, we can still move the, somebody's going to move the article, they're just going to say this was not voted.
Mm-hmm.
Or this was voted as not recommended.
But it's not based on our vote, it's, it's the finance committee, because that's who, who makes the motions during town meeting, from, the, from the government side.
So, we should align, to Renee's point, we should align our vote with how it's going to be represented at a town, town meeting. So, the one that we voted earlier, no action, we're not going to do any action on, and FinCom voted not, no action, too, right?
Correct.
For which one?
Voting by a no action. Where's the...
Article 5, no action. Article 10, no action.
Yeah.
Article 16, no action.
So, actually, in theory, we wouldn't want any not recommended, we would want all no action.
No, because, for example, the planning board won. We may, we could have, as a board, said not recommend, well, we did, because we're tied. But we don't want to take the right to vote away from the people at town meeting. That's still an active article on town meeting floor. We're not, we're not suggesting...
Even no action is still active on, because someone can still move the article, right?
Chairman.
Ms. Kimball?
Article 18's coming up. It doesn't matter what, if it's, if it wasn't recommended by the finance committee. Article 18 comes up, the moderator say, motion to accept Article 18.
They're going to be silent.
And he'll say, motion to accept Article 18. No one speaks. It's, uh, it's, it's denied due to lack of motion. The only time you're going to get a motion from the floor is anyone can get up and make a motion for an article. If the finance committee has approved it and they're supporting it, it will get moved automatically. If it doesn't, if they don't support it for no action or not recommended, if no one gets up and speaks and says, I want, Bob Kimball doesn't get to say, I want to recommend this article, then I can do it. But the finance committee is, it's pretty much dead of water.
Okay, so...
The lack of motion, it's going to die due to lack of motion.
Yeah. So, I appreciate what you're saying. I think then we do what you said and we vote the way that FinCom voted.
Either that or get FinCom to vote the way you voted.
Hard play.
No, I, I...
Either way, it makes, it's the same thing.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think we're splitting hairs. And at this point in the night, I'm glad, if, if you want to open it for reconsideration, we can do that and then vote your, your pleasure.
I'd like to open it for reconsideration, but Jack had just left the room.
We still have Quorum.
I know, but...
Can I just make a suggestion?
Go for it.
What if you meet Monday night and you talk to the finance committee about the conversation you had here tonight, and that's why you're recommending no action, because you want to have the opportunity to go?
But they, but they had that same conversation, right? Was, let's get, let's do it.
Maybe if they hear it from you, and then they might say, well, rather than bring this up and to start a discussion about something that we're not going to do, maybe we'll change our vote to no action.
I, I, I just think, we're, we're going to have the, the things printed for people, and I think that we should try to avoid any situation where we change what we've handed out. Because we already have that complaint now of things being different than what they actually see in the packets. I mean, I, I prefer to keep it as least confusing as possible.
Okay, then I'd, I'd entertain a, a motion for reconsideration and let's, if you want, if, if...
So, moved.
Okay, second.
Okay, so...
Get away from Jack.
Oh, we do have to wave at Jack, yeah, because he voted on it.
You want to go on to the next one?
I was halfway down the stairs when I was called back, so if you want to go on to the next one.
Bob, we should go over the cemetery.
Is, is that door...
Oh, yeah, oh, thank you, that's the last one.
Yeah, no, I know, but to come back in, are the doors open? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, Bob, would you mind going over the cemetery rules of Article 8?
I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you have. What I can tell you was, after months of discussion, and we actually hired an outside agency called BSC, BSC Group, it's David Crispin. I met him, like, five times at the Mass Municipal Association over the years. He came in with some draft rules and regulations that we were able to work with. We went through that process and put together all of the recommendations we had. When we were done with that, back in June, we actually turned it over to town council and asked them to review it also, which they have done also. So, the final draft that you're, you're getting is a combination of a consultant, the committee itself, and town council. And everyone's in tune and agrees that this is the way we should go with it. When we, when we purchased the new property down on Newland Street a few years ago, the highway department, who's also the cemetery department, was complaining that they didn't have, the rules and regulations they had were from 1970-something. They had not been updated for years, so they asked if we could do an update on it. And that's what, that's what the committee did. We spent almost a year doing this, actually. And so, the final document that you have is pretty much what we're proposing. The only thing we were told by council to take out was the amended prices, which I believe is in the back of your, your packet, if you have it. That was decided, town council suggested that that's the board of selectmen. We do not need town meeting approval for that, that, that's something the board can do. So, what I would recommend is you recommend the rules and regulations, which have been looked at way too many times, down to word and verbiages and down to commas. Then, also, maybe at your next meeting, you should take a look at the amended prices, where we went back and we did a research on all area towns. We are still in the mid, middle, the low end on these prices. But it's important to get these in place because anyone who's being buried down at the new cemetery would have to not only comply with the regulations, but also pay these new fees. So, that, that's something you guys are going to address later on. But as far as the National Commission goes, yes, we did, we did go through everything and it's pretty much cut and dry, what we need to get done. If for any reason we find something that we don't agree with, what we can come back to the board of selectmen, you guys can make a modify, modify change in it. But we've gone through it pretty much. Town council was very good at changing a lot of verbiage and referring to mass general laws that we didn't do and, you know, and he did a nice job. Greg Colby did a nice job.
Will we have copies of this available at town meeting? Of the regulations?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any questions regarding the cemetery rules and regulations?
I apologize that I stepped out for the beginning.
We put you in charge of cemetery, is all you were going.
Okay. Good for Halloween, right? I'm assuming there's, there's nothing controversial in here, it all seems very...
No. No, it was a stupid little things, like, you kind of come a foot from the grave to plant stuff, because when they're trying to mow, they've got panels and they've got all kinds of nonsense flying everywhere. So, we kind of restricted that. We changed it where, before in a grave, you could put only a casket and two urns, now you can put a casket and four urns. So, you can actually put five burials in one, one plot.
Okay.
Or four urns, or whatever you want to do. I mean, whatever, whatever process you want to work with. Other than that, we're just cleaning up the language. The language was so archaic that it had to be the forms, we had to create new forms based on today's laws, not on the ones from the 80s and 90s. All of this was approved by council.
Great.
Ms. Kelly?
So, Mike, I was just going to ask you, like, what do you feel are the highlights and the changes? And I think you just answered that with Jack.
I'm sorry?
I was just going to ask you, your opinion of the highlights of the changes of the document?
Well, we actually, we sat down, all of us, and we agreed with everything you suggested.
Yeah, but, but like...
And we all did clean it up.
Like, an overview of what do you feel are the most critical changes? And I think you said that with, you know, the changes in the, the urns and...
Yeah, with the grave size, the urns, the plantings, people not pointing flagpoles up, you know, benches. I mean, it was, it was stupid little things, but more importantly, they, it's a clear definition of what we want people to do at the cemetery. And it gives the cemetery commission an opportunity to go in and say, if this isn't allowed, we can take it. Well, right now, we can't really do that. So, it's, it's just cleaning the whole process up, making sure our definitions were right, making sure that everyone, like, the, the funeral home can't do it on certain days, like it's not allowed on Sunday. You know, we had to clean that up. It can be allowed on Saturday, but will cost extra. Not trying to get in anyone's pocket. We're trying to keep it as reasonable as possible based on the circumstances. But the only reason we really went into it again is because of Newland Street, the Newland Cemetery, where it's brand new. We're told it's good for 142 years. a hundred and forty-two years, I'm not going to worry about it, but I think, uh, it's going to hold quite a few graves, it's got thousands of graves in there, that'll be the last one we'll have to worry about, but we wanted to make sure everything was lined up so we wouldn't have any problems down the road. One particular area was, let's say a family member challenged that I can't be put into that grave, well, it may take weeks, so we, we straightened out the language in that, so the town wouldn't be, have to be responsible for the storage costs, it would have to go back to somebody else while it was argued out in court or where it might happen, and it does happen that way. We came pretty close to my own family, so I knew it does happen. So, but there's just many different scenarios, if you read through it, um, we're going to be meeting with the Finance Committee, uh, Monday night before the meeting, if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them there, but, uh, I know you haven't had, probably had a chance to read it over, but when you get the new draft, it pretty much cleans it all up, and it's a lot smaller than what we originally proposed, there's less language in it, so, which makes more sense.
Any additional questions? A chair would entertain a motion, oop, I'm sorry.
I, I just said thank you.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry. A chair would entertain a motion to, uh, recommend Article eight in the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Done.
Okay, we're done.
We're not, just to go back to the one that I, I motion to reconsider.
Oh, right.
Jack, let's take a.
During a meeting, I had things happen.
Okay, so the chair would entertain a motion to reconsider Article nineteen.
Well, you already entertained.
But.
Mary's second, oh, we have to do it with Jack?
We got to do it with Jack here, yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, uh, all those in favor of reconsidering Article nineteen?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, now we're reconsidering.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to, um, move to recommend the Article nineteen? Huh?
Any second?
Oh, second, sorry, it's eleven fifteen.
I know, I know, I'm toast, too. Uh, motion a second for Article nineteen, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
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 Okay, so now we're going with the.
So, what was that, that was?
Zero four.
Not recommended.
Not recommended.
Article nineteen.
Yep. I don't think there's any need for us to discuss a draft purchase and sale agreement based on a prior conversation. Uh, I also don't feel like we've, we've got the, uh, the vote on remote, or maybe we get the documents on the remote participation, I haven't had a chance to review them, I don't know if anyone else has, we just got them this afternoon.
I sent, um, yeah, so I sent this morning, um, my comments, and I think, I, I saw Lauren's email, or, Mike, I saw you send Lauren's email back, but I didn't get a chance to look at it, did she update the document that I updated?
Uh, I don't know, I've got it.
I can, I can look real quick.
I don't know what.
It sounded like she did in her email, but I was, it was, um, you know, during business hours, I can't really take a look at it. And I also sent late revisions to the minutes.
No, I know, that's, I was going to say, we'll have to wait on those, too, because I, I couldn't even see, though, the, any changes, because I just looked at it on my phone.
It, it is mine, because it says already comments on there, so. There's just one document to look at.
Was that yours?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the minutes again.
So, she updated the document that I updated, so.
So, do we have a copy of that?
Mike sent us, I don't, he sent us an email at eleven fifteen with Lauren, she said she did some additional changes, revised certain sections, be consistent with state law, and then taken into account that the entire document is the remote participation policy.
But that's not what I have.
You ha, you have the version before her updates.
Oh.
And I don't know what she updated, because I couldn't look at it.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to review it.
So, can we vote on this Monday night?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, yeah, we could.
That's a great idea.
I know, I know, charter would like it done, but, I mean, at this point, I'm looking at an old copy.
Right.
Yeah, we, we, we can do that Monday night, we, we've got nothing else on the agenda.
All right.
Yep.
Oh, and, oh, Mike, you did send it to everybody, okay. So, Mike sent it at eleven fifteen this morning.
Okay, so the one from eleven fifteen today is the, what we would consider the final, unless somebody has comments. Okay.
Town manager's report? Nothing? Oh, boy. Selectmen's report in now, Mr. Conway.
We have something in here from, um, uh, was it Thomas Knoll, who's chair of the Norton Zoning Board of Appeals, his son Alex won the Topsfield Fair this weekend with a two thousand two hundred and ninety-four and a half pound pumpkin, which is the eighth largest ever in the world.
Wow.
Wow.
So, uh, he lives in. We can't claim it, because it was grown in Palm-Fritt, Connecticut, but, uh, I guess, you know, he has roots in Norton, so I guess so does the pumpkin.
Unfortunately, his pumpkin does not.
Yes.
Literally.
And then, um, and we're, we're trying to wrap up, a couple of things, uh, so Mike, uh, update on the traffic lights?
Yep, um, the bids went out, so they should be, the, it should be awarded, um, this month or the beginning of next month, and, oh, by the way, the traffic lights we're talking about on one twenty-three and four ninety-five and, uh, south and north Washington Street, so that project is scheduled to begin in, in the spring this year.
So, spring twenty twenty?
Yep. And that's first is the traffic lights, before they do anything else.
Are they both spring twenty twenty?
Um, definitely the off-ramps, I'm not sure about.
The Washington Street ones, okay. And then there was also mention of one, um, down closer to Leonard Street, is that, I know that's part of the condign development.
Out of the condign.
Do we have any visibility into when that's coming up?
They probably will be doing it in the spring also, because they plan on getting, getting to work, uh, they're going to start, uh, soon on the sewer line that they have to put in, get that in first, and then, uh, try and get moving on the buildings in the spring.
My last thing, uh, I know, uh, whether it's by a fluke, there's been a lot of, um,